Okay, let's go ahead and get started with the June 17th City Council meeting and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Christina, the roll.
Clark, Fish, Jorgensen, Call, Parsons, Mayor Lombard.
Here. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion to, a second to approve the agenda as presented, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the minutes of June 3rd and June 13th. Motion is second to approve the minutes of June 3rd and June 13th, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bills and claims are attached with the agenda, any motion to approve those?
Aye.
Second.
Motion is second to approve, any questions on those?
Yes, so, and everybody that has been coming to these meetings know that I preach this all the time, but I did see Menards and Sam's in our listing, and I understand that sometimes we just can't buy local, but I just want to encourage us to buy local whenever possible.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the three items on the consent calendar, approving Platts in the Alliance Plaza, Bluffs, and Twin Rivers Crossing addition?
So moved.
Motion is second to approve the consent calendar, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anyone from the public wishing to address the council may do so now.
There we go. My name is Becky Zerfle, and I live out in the Bluffs on Heritage Road, and there's been some real concern out there with safety issues as far as speeding, reckless driving, and a lot, a lot with the contractors that are driving through there, cement trucks, et cetera. We really noticed it on Heritage Road on the speeding part, there's no way that they're doing 25 miles an hour. The concern has gotten to be worse perhaps since school has been out, more kids are out playing, et cetera, but we just want to address the council tonight, there's been several, and I'm not sure who all is here, from the Bluffs. Thank you. I don't, we don't have children, so I can't really address the issue of the safety with the children, but I do know I would never want to see a child hit out there because of the speeding, reckless driving, the contractors. I love to go walking really early in the morning, and there's been more than once, there's not always sidewalks, I actually would prefer to walk on the pavement, but on the side of the road facing the traffic, so that if there's somebody coming, you can get out of the way, but more than once I've had to jump onto the grass or the curb to avoid somebody because they're on their cellphone, I've even noticed a cup of coffee, cellphone, and trying to drive, very talented, but I'm not blaming the kids, I'm not blaming the adults that should know better, and I'm not blaming the contractors, it's everything altogether. It was interesting to see when I asked a few people what they knew what the speed limit was, and some said, um, I think it's 35, and somebody would say 30, somebody else said, well, it should only be 15, nobody really seemed to know, but I do see that there's a couple of speed limit signs put up out there, and I think it's helped a little bit just for the knowledge of the speed. Also, I saw that somebody, the city, whomever, maybe it was the police department, put up the electronic speed alert sign by the park, that really is a concern, there's no some, there's not sidewalks all the way to the park there, so kids are on the street, they come down that hill on Heritage Road, and they're flying a lot of times, and they're not looking. So, we, we, I don't want to just bring a problem without some solutions, and we came up with a few solutions, but we aren't the experts to know what that solution is either. We need the experts to do that, and I really appreciate all that the police department has done out there, because I do see them when I'm out walking, patrolling the area, so I'm happy with that, I really am, but just a few of the solutions that they'd come up with out there is that, one thing is sidewalks, I know the area's being developed out there, and it's great to see the growing area out there, but there's a lot of kids, and there's a lot of walking, there's a lot of people that do running, bicycling, et cetera, and it's mainly on the streets or they're going to the park. The other nights, there was, I was visiting with a lady that had two children, and the little boy was so excited about something, and he went to run out across to go, the street to go home, and there was a truck, a contractor coming. I, I yelled, and she did too, and then I apologized because it was not my child, but wow, anyway, you know, that, that person could not have slowed down in time to have avoided that child. So, there's different ones, things that have been brought up, speed bumps was one of them, just for a while, temporary ones, I'm not crazy about speed bumps, but it can be affected, but it has to be all the way across the road, there's three through streets out there, and they're the ones that are the biggest concerns. We have had people, we live right at the end, in a twin home, right at the end of River, Riverbend Road, River, I, thank you, Riverbluff Road, and we've actually, in the wintertime, we have people in our driveway because they can't make the corner, they've taken out our mailbox once, and I understand that a little bit of ice and down that slope, it, that can happen, but it happens a lot, so they need to know that they need to slow up. So, the speed bumps could be one of the, one thing, another thing is that signage that says "slow children at play" or something, maybe we can even investigate to see, can we put in a 15 mile per hour area like by the park or something to help with where there's going to be more children? I feel adults can get out of their way a little quicker than what a child, they're not going to be looking, but perhaps the speed bumps we've already addressed, but just maybe at certain times, more monitoring, last Friday night, and it seems like almost every Friday night gravel trucks hit that Heritage Road, one after the other, and if you aren't going fast enough, you can't see their license plates or their grill of that gravel truck behind you. So, they're in a hurry, it's Friday night, but they'll continue until about 7:30, and it's just, it's constant, so maybe during times if, when the construction people are going to work, if we, they can't get an access road out there for the construction that's going on, maybe more monitoring at certain times, if a few got picked up, and hey, you know, I'm not, I could be guilty someday too, I try not to be, but I could be, I would deserve to be picked, stopped, and ticketed for speeding if I am doing that. So just maybe a little more monitoring in, and I know that this isn't something that the city can probably do, but if they had an access road out there somehow for all of the heavy equipment and the construction that is going on out there, and I have no idea where, but that is a possibility to do something like that, too. There could be, when we moved here three years ago this month, we were told when we were looking at that twin home, that there was supposed to be a bike-walking path all the way around the Bluffs. Nobody seems to know anything about that, but if there was something like that in the area, that would also take the people off of the streets, it would just help, it would be nice. So some of that is, is some of the things that we brought up, I don't know if there's any more that others feel that would be an adequate solution, and something that could be looked at down the road here to kind of help with this speeding, and I have been seeing on this Facebook that there's evidently other areas in the city, it sounds like that there's been some mischief and some speeding going on, too, so we're not the only ones that's having that problem, but I, we, we just felt that it needed to be brought to the attention of the council and start there, and perhaps at this point in time, then something down the road can be done to maybe help monitor it and, and let the people know, whether they're kids, whether they're the adults like us, the contractors, whomever, that it's not going to be tolerated in residential areas like that. Can I ask if anybody else, if I haven't covered it all?
I can ask that.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have it as an item later on in the agenda, so the city council will address some stuff at that time.
Okay.
Is there anybody else from the public that would like to address any concerns that have not already been addressed by Becky? Yes, ma'am.
Hey, hello, good evening, my name is Liz Hagan, and I live on the other side of the Bluffs up the road, thank you, by the way, for pulling our community together. I just want to make sure that we note that it's not just Heritage Road, I actually live on the corner of Ashton Trail and Riverbend Road, and if you know the area, it's essentially two hills that come down into a valley, and just Friday night, luckily I was able to get the attention of a dump truck driver, but he was speeding down the hill at a good 40, 45 miles an hour, full load, neighborhood full of kids, which is why we love Brandon, but as a mom standing on that corner, it took my breath away, so please, even a yield sign, just something, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council?
So, Tyler Stillwater, I live on Riverbluff. Fortunately for us, I don't think, we don't, I mean, you get some speeding through there, probably no more than anywhere else, but these two ladies live on the two roads that are the trouble, and it's Riverbend and it's Heritage, and while we'll say it's construction vehicles, it's just, it's other vehicles, too, unfortunately, you can't mandate common sense of people. And unfortunately, it's going to get worse over time, you're going to take the dump trucks away at some point in time, but those are going to end up being half-mile roads by the time they get all the way back to the state park, and it's those two roads that are the straight shots out of that development, you know, and so, I don't know how we address this, I know the city isn't fond of speed bumps, and I know they're not fond of stop signs, but at some point in time, you're probably going to have to drop a couple stop signs in to get people to stop, that's the only way you're going to get them to slow down, unfortunately, because, like I said, those are going to be two long roads that are going to run all the way to the back of that development.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? You can address the council with other issues, too, if you'd like to at this time, thank you. As I said, we'll be addressing this issue on the agenda later on here.
I don't know if this one I, but I was going to ask for your permission.
Turn on the mic. There we go.
Sorry, ask for permission to be able to have alcohol at McCarty Park? Is that, am I jumping ahead?
Is that hometown day, is that in McCarty Park, Brian? Is that the agenda?
This would be a private, a private family gathering. You would have to come into City Hall or call me, and there's a form that you'd have to fill out to get alcohol in the park. Okay, I was told I had to come here and address that.
I think it's an application process that you go through down there, and then it comes before the council at that point, and then the council addresses it.
Okay.
Okay?
August 3rd.
Yeah. If you haven't posted on the agenda, that's why.
And I did call ahead, and that's?
Are you on?
I, I was told that I was.
I'm sorry, but, no, you're not on the agenda, so contact those guys down there, and they can take care of you and help you out. Anyone else? All right, with that being said, we'll continue on, we have a public hearing for a transfer of a on and off sale liquor license from MFDD Inc. to PJ Brandon LLC. Any comments, questions, Brian?
Nope.
Questions from the board, council? If not, I'd need a motion to approve the transfer.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the transfer of the on-off sale liquor license from MFDD to PJ Brandon LLC, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Second public hearing is a on-off sale malt beverage license for South Dakota Farm Wine License to Kingbird LLC, doing business as Kingbird Coffee House, the transfer again?
No.
No, this is new, this is a new retail license. Can I have a motion to approve that?
Second.
Motion is second, any questions on that malt beverage license? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then, lastly, we have a rezoning of Lot 1 of Lot B Track 1 Railroad Edition, the first reading, reading of ordinance 591, Brian?
Correct, this is the vacant lot just south of the lumberyard, they would like to rezone it from R1 to general, or central business.
Question?
Planning and zoning had a due pass recommendation.
Okay. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the rezoning of that lot, the first reading of ordinance 591, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Old business item that we have, Mrs. Bossman claims she presented a bill to the council last meeting for a digging up of a frozen water pipe, Brian, if you can brief us on...
Correct, her water line at 1009 East Cottonwood Drive froze up in late March, I believe. Contractor came out from Copper Cottage to thaw it out, we had to go out and dig up the driveway because the shut-off valve was bent, correct?
Key got stuck.
Key got stuck in it, so we had to dig up the driveway. The property is on our trickle list, we notify those folks usually in October to start trickling when, when it starts getting cold out, you've got water consumption there on page 39. The letter that we send out to let everybody know they should start trickling soon is on page 40. And the bill itself is on page 38.
So it's the opinion of the administration that when we issued the trickle recommendation, it did not occur?
Well, looking at the usage shown on page 39, there wasn't a lot of water consumed that would indicate trickling until the April bill, which is from March 20th to April 20th.
Okay.
So if you look at that, ranging anywhere from 550 to 1600 gallons for the month, which isn't, looking at the other consumption from July through December, it's out of the ordinary, so if there was trickling occurring, it wasn't adequate to prevent the pipe from freezing, and it did freeze on the, according to the contractor, it appeared to be frozen on the house side of the curb box. And we are responsible from the main to the curb box, the homeowner's responsible from the curb box into the house.
Okay. Sounds like the recommendation from the administration would be that we are not responsible for the bill, then?
Correct, unless there's some evidence that we're missing.
Any questions or concerns from the council relate to this? Do I need a motion, Brian, or do I just?
A motion to.
Okay, because she did come, is Mrs. Bossman here, present tonight? No, she's not here. Okay, then I would need a motion to accept the recommendation from the administration to deny the claim for reimbursement on the water pipe expenditure, Mrs. Bossman presented last meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second to deny the claim by Mrs. Bossman, any other questions, comments? All those in favor signify by...
I have a quick question.
Okay.
So did, did any of these other residents have any similar freezing issues? Because I'm just looking at the adjustment averages, and there are a couple others that had similar 600, 700 gallon differences.
Not that we're aware of. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now on to committee reports, golf course included, once again, is the CIP listing that's been in the agenda for the last couple meetings.
I believe that they're going to start painting.
Started painting, ready.
Okay, so that's in, that's in the works. Very good, so...
Incar path on number nine, I think is getting formed up.
It is.
Yeah.
It is, and I know that Zane is doing some checking with the insurance about the roof.
Correct.
Shingles, so...
Very good, thank you. Parks and Rec Committee next, we have a work report for your review, and then there's also a line item number B2 splash pad planning discussion.
The splash pad report was presented at the last council meeting, I would recommend that between the park committee and the city council, we have a joint meeting at some point in time to go over that report so that we can all get on the same page, because if I remember right, there were five or six options presented, we should really agree on which option we want to pursue.
We, we did come up with a date for, from Park Board, what was it, Tammy?
Tuesday, June 25th.
At 6 o'clock.
Sounds like we will schedule a joint meeting between the Park Board and the city council on June 25th at 6 o'clock, here to discuss this splash pad and come up with a plan of attack on that. Very good, thank you. We have a pool staff wage adjustment for Jada Cheddar, she passed her WSI certification, can I have a motion?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the wage adjustment for Jada Cheddar, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hometown days at McCarty Park on July 20th, the Optimists are running this once again, we did have a couple concerns at our briefing meeting that were brought up by the council, Christina, were those addressed?
Yes, insurance, I did get a copy of their insurance, that has been addressed, not sure the other question, I wasn't here. What was the other question?
The other question was about volunteers to assist with the run that happens at 9 o'clock, and they will have volunteers that'll be there to help, hopefully we'll have a police guard down there also at the McCarty Park at, at the very least, but if they get called away, we should have people that are able to assist.
Very good.
Was there anything else, Dana, that you asked about?
I don't think there was, so can I have a motion to approve the use of McCarty Park during the hometown days as presented? Motion, motion is second to approve the facility use request of McCarty Park for hometown days on July 20th by the Optimist Club, all those in favor?
And then, and then one other thing, we, we do waive the fee on that one?
Okay. With the fee waived, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, thank you. Moving on to the police department, public safety meeting, we have a monthly report from the police department, we have an inspection department monthly report, a fire department monthly report, and heck with all those reports, we have the best thing, we get to introduce our three new police officers. I see three good-looking young men out there that Chief Weir is going to introduce right now. You're not one of them, no.
All too well.
Turn on the mic.
Okay, yes, it's been a big week for the Brandon Police Department, Lieutenant Stoffel got promoted, and we selected three new officers, I wanted to introduce them to the council and to the citizens of Brandon, First Dan Francis, a graduate from Brandon High School. Dan, you want to say anything? That's, that's Dan. He's quiet and 6'6".
Yep. Very good.
Excellent. And Andrew Nygaard, Andrew's a former deputy from Salem, Cook County.
Yeah, I'm a former deputy from Cook County, I used to work there, and I graduated from Southeast Sacramento, I'm a fourth degree, so I look forward to being a part of this community and serving you guys, so, it's been an awesome, awesome site so far, so...
Very good, Andrew, thank you.
Zach and his wife Michelle are here as well.
Yeah. I grew up in Crooks, I joined the Guard, went to USD, and then worked at the jail for a bit, and then I applied here last time, but they, they didn't want me that long. I tried to get in.
The old chief was much more discerning than me, apparently. We want you now, welcome aboard, thank you.
I just want to say it's not often that a police chief gets to hire basically 25% of his workforce in one day, so it's a significant, significant day, and if I can just teach Dan to patrol in the Bluffs and say, "The reason I stopped you is speeding," we'll be setting good, right?
Very good, thanks, chief. That brings us to item number C5, which is the safety concerns that were addressed earlier by the community in the bluff area. City council or administration, any comments, questions?
The, the, the most visible thing is speed trailer, the PD put that out there Friday.
I think we said it.
Sorry? To get, at least get people's attentions, Sidney Janzma is working with the developer, a lot of those places that don't have sidewalks are developer-owned currently, so she is working with the developer to try to get sidewalks in. The city has one just south of the townhomes on the east side of Heritage, as you've just come in, there's a street right of way that we would need to put ours in, and we're working on that. If the developer is uncooperative, we'll have it on the next agenda or two, sometime in July, that the city council requires the sidewalks to be put in place.
And there's undeveloped properties?
Yep. Primarily, there's some, there's some vacant lots, there's one just north of the park that's vacant, and then the other ones are primarily drainage ways, okay, which aren't ours yet, so we'll work with the developer to get that done, if the developer chooses not to, we do have a mechanism where the council can require those to be put in, and then we would, we would special assess those back against the property owners. property owners. And then Chief and I talked last week about increased enforcement activities out in the bluffs. Very good.
So, Brian, what is our policy on that undeveloped land? Do we typically make them do it, or is it, is developed? I don't remember.
Typically, we don't require sidewalks until there's a building on it, but a lot of these places are drainage ways, which will eventually be turned over to us. They aren't yet. So it's kind of, it's, it's a little bit different than, than a normal subdivision, so to speak. We have taken the approach in the past that if a vacant lot is owned by one of the neighbors, if there's a house on either side, we require the sidewalk to be put in. We've done that in the past. Otherwise, we wait for the building permit to be issued and the house to be constructed. But we can certainly take a look at, at those drainage ways and get sidewalks in there.
Any discussion on current speed limit?
Lowering? Um, no, we didn't. I mean, it's, it's standard throughout the state. The speed limits are twenty-five miles an hour in all residential neighborhoods. That's standard. You know, we don't, we don't put speed bumps in streets. It creates traffic hazards, which we would then be liable for. The, the slow children signs, which were in vogue a while ago, are not recognized or permitted by the MUTCD, which is, which dictates our signage. Don't ask me what it stands for.
Manual uniform traffic control device?
There you go.
They don't want us?
Nope. They're, they're, they're not enforceable, so their, their take is that if it, if it can't, if you can't write a ticket on it, you probably shouldn't have it. But it will be out monitoring that area. We're trying to narrow in the, the timeframes so that we can, we can best utilize the PD. We can't be out there at all hours, but if there's a certain timeframe from, you know, six AM to nine AM, or from five to seven PM, we're trying to narrow that down so that we can, we can get a few more cars out there.
And just real quick on the signage, I know we can't do the large signs, but we can certainly do small signs, and I did bring a few that I'd just like to donate to the residents out there that are just like yard signs, and I have a few in order that are more three-dimensional as well. It kind of, I think they're called safety sams that kind of look like a child's about ready to go into a street. So I, I think all those little things add up, and I commend the residents, you know, for, for taking action and, and getting that awareness going. I think, you know, the more you can do of that as well, get more of your neighbors to be aware and talk to the teen drivers and recruit them for your Facebook pages if, if you need to do a flyer, you know, it all, it all adds up.
And then we will also discuss with staff between the engineer and the Police Department appropriate yield signs and/or stop signs at various intersections in the bluffs. So that may be coming in front of the city council at a later date.
With the two message boards that we've-
The timeline is going to be for the sidewalks?
Just, just a second, ma'am.
Sorry.
With the, with the signage for the message boards that we got from the county, would it make sense to put one of those on Heritage somewhere close to the park and just say, "Please abide by the twenty-five, twenty-five mile an hour temporarily"?
Certainly put one out.
With all the dirt that's being moved right now and all the contractors that are going out there, I don't know.
I can put one out. Just put it by the park.
Might help send a message. It's like, yeah, if there's a place, I, I think there's a, an area there where it could fit.
Yeah, they're pretty large, but.
You probably could buy that from us.
Yeah, maybe that, by the booster station. Sure.
Yes, very good idea. Tammy, is that contractor, is that still Steven Buskirk that's moving? I hear a lot of comments about the contractor. Have you expressed some of these concerns to him?
Yep, multiple times.
Have you?
Yeah. They are going to send out a letter to some of the home builders as well, just because they're a little bit messy out there on Heritage Road. So they've been pretty well to work with so far, but.
If you would, send me his contact information, and maybe I'll give him a call also.
Sure.
He's usually very receptive to concerns from the community and so on and so forth there, so I'll give, give him a call and see if we can try to alleviate some of that. But I appreciate all your concerns, Becky, but as you know, on Friday afternoon with the, the contractors, they're not going to, I mean, I could stand out in the middle of the road with a great big two and a five, and they're just going to mow me under. And I, I, I don't want to make light of anything here that you brought up because it is very important. I jotted down a, a number of the things. Sidewalks, it sounds like we will do our best to, to get those. We battled that in a lot of areas in Brandon. The core area of Brandon has no sidewalks, and we're planning on redoing those roads down there, and Tammy and I met with some of the homeowners down there, and, oh my, you know, we mentioned sidewalks, and this guy just got defensive as all get out about a sidewalk, and "I don't have any kids," and blah, 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 you know. So there's sidewalk issues all over, and then I looked across the street, and there's about seventeen little kids' bicycles across there, and I said, "Do you think that that person probably would want a sidewalk for their kids to walk to school?" And so there's sidewalk issues all over the town that we battle off all the time, and it sounds like we can get some of them taken care of, though, with just contractor issues. Speed bumps and signage, it sounds like we don't do the speed bump issue in the town to put those out. Just have never done it, and we don't like to do that. Is that, Chief, is that the, we don't like the speed bump issue?
Yes, my sense of liability as well.
Right. And then at the briefing meeting, the, the multiple police chiefs that we have in this room all the time brought up the issue that they do not want to change speed limit, have varied speed limits throughout the city, and the fact that twenty-five mile an hour is residential, no matter if you're in this residential area or that residential area, so they want to stay with that. Maybe, they talked about maybe doing something wrong in the park area, if we could get that lower down or something, didn't we? Talk a little bit about that, or slow down sign or something by the park, something like that.
A park sign?
Park sign. Right. So, go ahead, Dave. Yeah, the speed limit by the park, being that the park is just a fairly small one, it doesn't make sense to, to slow it down to twenty and a block later even. But I, I would also remind people that it's been my experience when I was over in Sioux Falls, we, we'd have areas that we'd get a lot of speed complaints on, and we'd put out a, a counter. And typically, vast majority, and I did this with my dad over by McKinnon Park, vast majority of the vehicles that were going by were going by it at twenty-five mile an hours or less, and there were maybe three or four that, that were speeding. According to him, everybody that went by was speeding. Twenty-five miles an hour on a, on a residential street can sometimes appear to be faster than what it is. We don't have one of those monitors that we can use as far as detecting speed, and I'm not doubting that there is some speeding going on up there with, especially with some of the contractors that don't live there. But I think with the, with the additional officers up there and maybe try the sign and, and then having the speed board up there, it's, it's going to, hopefully, it's going to help and educate. That primarily what you need is just to train them how to drive. So with that being said, I, we are going to try to do as much as we can internally here, and, and the police chief promised me he would get as much presence out there as he could possibly could, still maintaining law and order in the rest of the city, obviously, but he's going to do his, his best of his ability to get out there and put some people out there, and I think that's probably the best thing to have, that, that black and white cop car out there is, I know that deters me a lot when I see that. As Chief Cole would attest to, my front end hitting the front of the street as soon as I would see his black and white car coming around the corner. Anyhow, Barb, or somebody else had a comment? Nope? Thank you for-
There was a question from the audience about the timeframe with the sidewalks.
That all depends. If the, if the developer's going to put it in, it's probably going to be faster than if, than if we have to follow our process, which is a special assessment process. We have to give them due notice, and then if they don't put it in in that timeframe, then we have a process to follow to get those costs special assessed against those property owners, which involves public hearing, et cetera, notice of proposed costs. So that one would take a while if we had to, if we have to do it.
So what he's saying there would be a lot better off if Mr. Van Buskirk would take care of it?
Correct.
And he is responsible for those drainage pathway, pathways again?
Correct. They are currently the owner.
They're currently the owner. So they have not turned those over to the city?
Correct.
Gotcha, gotcha. All right.
How do you think it's over the drainage? What is that? Over? Sidewalk, what is that?
Yeah, just, just put a sidewalk over it, because I think most of them are relatively flat next, in the, in the right of way. There's culverts underneath the roads on virtually all of them.
If there is one hole or two that's across the street from the park that doesn't have, like what?
We can check on that, too.
I got my tab right. Sorry.
The question was that there was a, a homeowner in the development that does not have a sidewalk also, and administration alerted that they will check on that also.
Yep, and just to be clear, there are some vacant lots up there that we wouldn't require them to put in sidewalks until they have sold that lot and put, and got a building permit, so there'd still be some gaps in there.
Right, and a lot that'll be developed at, a contractor definitely doesn't want to put a sidewalk in there until it is developed. I can understand that.
Right.
Okay. Continue, thanks, Mrs. Erple. Moving on, ambulance ordinance draft copy. Mr. Parsons, Mr. Reed, anybody?
The latest draft, I sent it out to Chuck and Brett for their comments and review. Dave had a couple of comments that I've inserted the changes in the draft. Maybe I did that incorrect.
Thank you.
Otherwise, it should be ready to go. We can put it in a formal ordinance form in July.
I think that's what Brett and I would recommend.
Good with everything in there?
Yep.
I'll be honest, I didn't go through with the fine-tooth comb or anything, but you guys put a lot of time into it and, and staff helping you, and I appreciate that, so I'd entertain any questions from the council or comments on it. Hearing none, we'll press forward. We need to have a request for fireworks permit for Beth, from Bethany Meadows on July first out at their organization, if I can have a motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion and second to approve a special fireworks permit for Bethany Meadows on July first, two thousand nineteen. Any questions? All those in favor of approving that signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have a resolution sixteen nineteen for charging a five-dollar annual, is it an annual? Annual animal license fee. Say that three times, annual animal. Five bucks for a license for your animal. Can I have a motion to approve that?
Second.
Motion and second to approve resolution sixteen nineteen to charge five dollars for your animal license fees. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
So does that, where do you, do you have to come down to City Hall for that, or that's going to be run through the vets, or?
The ordinance doesn't take effect until July third, so that's why this will take effect on July third. So I've got to wait for the ordinance to get effective first before this will be, but yes, once July third hits, then they will be able to purchase them at, at, the two in town for sure, and then I'm looking at Sioux Nation are kind of the popular ones in town.
The way I read it, when they get their rabies vaccine?
Yep.
That's when they pay it at that time?
That's when they pay it.
Sounds like a good plan. Item number D one, agent of record agreement for health insurance, transferring that from to Financial Services Incorporated. Correct, Brian?
Correct.
Can I have a motion to approve that? Motion and second to approve the agent of record agreement for health insurance to Financial Services Agreement. Any comments or discussion?
Uh, yes. I noticed that there is a five-year clause in here.
Correct.
And I, I guess I have a concern with that. I would rather that that is a year-to-year thing. Is that typical?
That was, that's what we included in the RFP, was a five-year term.
How do we get out of it if we want to? I mean, my, my clients are free to go anytime. I guess I'm, I'm not really willing to be committed to somebody for five years in this sort of a relationship.
I completely agree with that. I mean, it's a professional service, and we don't do that for our auditing firm or our engineering firms, or even our attorney that provides us professional services. There's not any benefit that I see to do that. Usually, if there's a contract that locks in a number of years, it's because the fee's been negotiated, but that's not the case.
Any other questions from the council members?
I would agree with those concerns. I'd rather see it be a year at a time.
This, this was put in the RFP when it was originally put out. Before my time here. Is there, is there a potential issue if we go against the RFP on that?
No.
That was a condition?
I shouldn't say that one. No.
Well, the agenda items for an agent of record, and this actually isn't an agent of record, an agent of record just in accord form, it's a one-page deal that says who we pick to represent us with the carrier.
We had, I thought we had already determined that Casey was going to be our agent of record for the next year.
We did.
Okay, so this is just formalizing it?
Correct.
Okay, well, I think, I, I don't know about the RFP thing, but I think when we discussed it with Casey, my understanding was that was for a year. So I would not be comfortable with going five years. Nothing against Casey, but I just, I think we need to have flexibility in that.
Come on up.
We wrote that completely just based on your RFP. It was approved by the, you know, it was approved, somebody approved the RFP. The RFP also stated you wanted a service agreement, so we provided a service agreement as well. That's why that, that language is, is in there, so, because it was approved on the RFP. It's not something we came up with.
Can we just approve it amended to a year?
There is a motion.
There is a motion. I'm going, what I'm going to do is I'm going to call for the rule on the current motion, and then we can come back if we want to after that fact. Current emotion is for the agreement as presented, which is presented for five years, Brian?
Correct.
Okay. Christina, I'm going to have you call out the rule on that motion.
Clark?
Name.
Fish?
Name.
Jorgensen?
Name.
Cole?
Name.
Parsons?
Name.
Okay, motion denied. Now, I would entertain a motion for a different period of time, someone so chose.
So I would make a motion for a year, and we, you know, we just do it like we've done it. That's the way we've been doing it all this time, I think.
Second.
Yeah.
You guys wanted, this was part of the RFP, that we were supposed to do these things, so we did them, and we did them to a court, and we requested that.
I missed it in the RFP, sorry.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the agent letter of record to Financial Services Inc. for health insurance for a period of one year. Any concerns or questions on that motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Yeah, that's far by the, we would definitely take a bite.
Yeah.
We totally understand.
Yeah.
We'll take it the wrong way.
Yeah, you, you either, yeah. I don't know.
Okay, item D two, we have an engagement letter with DA Davidson and company for a sales tax refund of a sales tax revenue refunding bonds, bonds that were originally issued for the fire hall. I'm sure everybody's had a chance to review that. With that being said, I would ask for a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the- Motion is second to approve the engagement letter with DA Davidson and Company for a possible refund of a sales tax revenue bonds in the amount of eight hundred thousand. By the chuckling, it's a review, the review of that is reviewing about seven pages of solid numbers, so just for simplicity sake, there's about eight hundred thousand dollars of bonds out there for our, our city hall that we originally issued, we can refund those, refinance those with a, a minimum of seventy-five thousand dollar savings as it is right now, maybe even better, so this engagement letter is authorizing this company to go into the market and see what he can, their, their company can do with the refunding of those bonds. With that being said, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item number D three is to review the city engineer's job description. Any, uh, comments?
I asked for this to, uh, be on here, I've kinda questioned a couple different times the criteria that we have in there for our city engineer to have the professional engineer designation. Um, I recall back when we interviewed for the position, overwhelmingly, most of our applicants did not have that designation, so I've, I've inquired why we're pursuing that, and it, I, as I understand it, it doesn't really make a lot of sense, because nothing is gonna change within our processes if we do pursue that. Uh, I guess I feel like we're kinda torturing our city engineer, asking her to pursue a credential that's not gonna change anything in our processes of what we do, so, uh, I guess I would just like to have some discussion, uh, to consider removing that criteria.
Counsel?
I agree wholeheartedly with that.
So Tammy, if you don't have your PE, you can still sign off on Platts, or we don't need Platts signed off on, 'cause that was always the big deal, at least in my mind.
No, I can sign off on Platts without being a PE.
Mm-hmm.
And speaking with Brian, I know there was some concern or potential concern, Brian, about, uh, that professional designation in the event of, uh, complications, I'll say.
Uh, no, the, the job duties won't change here, the, the only issue with a PE is just in case there's a court case. Um, and, and, you know, unfortunately, when experts get up on stand, that's gonna be one of the questions, are you a PE or are you not? And my opinion is, with a jury's, a jury's viewpoint, that a PE would hold more weight, uh, in a court case.
Agreed.
What percentage would you think municipalities have a PE?
That I don't know.
In your, but in your previous experience, what did, what did you find out in the workforce?
Uh...
Mixture?
Yeah, I've never had a, a staff engineer, they were always consultants, so I can do some checking if you want me to.
You know, it's not to say if we remove it from the job description that at some point in the future, if Tammy wanted to pursue that, she, she could.
Mm-hmm.
I, for one, would be willing to take that risk that you mentioned about the, uh, court cases.
Sounds like, let's do a little research on that then, and bring her back, Brian?
Yep.
Good. D four, block right, block party request of the twenty-four hundred block of Trevino Lane from, uh, Mrs. Sarah Walters.
Waters?
Waters? Waters, sorry. Uh, Brian, you wanna give a brief briefing on that, uh, request?
Uh, block party date July thirteenth from eleven to ten PM affecting the twenty-four hundred block of Trevino Lane. You've got, uh, the signatures of, of the majority of the property owners, and then you've got a map that shows those properties that have signed off, and the one at twenty-four twelve that has not.
And this is just for the end of the block, or the whole block?
End of the block, like a third of it.
I would ask a representative, Mrs. Waters or Mr. Waters, come up to the mic. Uh, and if the council has any specific questions, they can fire them at you guys.
Absolutely.
Right away. Uh, go ahead, counsel.
We have a map in front of us of that block, which house numbers would the end?
So where's twenty-four sixteen?
Twenty-four sixteen on the corner.
And seventeen?
Okay. We just highlighted the part that we were... The only part that we've, we've ever really used is the end of the street, it's just if you do the whole block, we're all spread apart, and we like to keep it a little bit closer, once you get the street open, it gives you a lot of space to put all the tables and everything in the middle of the street there.
Have you done this before?
This is our seventh, seventh year.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the block party request in the twenty-four hundred block of Trevino Lane from, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Waters.
Yes, sir.
Uh, as presented, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Moving on, the street work report, and engineer reporter there for your review, we needed a couple, uh, volunteers from the council to review RFPs for the core area refurbishing...
And Rushmore.
Core and Rushmore refurbishing areas, we got our volunteers in the form of, uh, Ms. Dana Clark and Mr. Tim Joseph, Jorgensen, why do I always wanna call you Josephine? Tim Jorgensen and Dana Clark have volunteered on our, uh, be, behalf of the council to review those RFPs. Tammy, you will set that up with them. Thank you. Thank you for volunteering. Then we also have some geotech testing contracts that we need to approve, if I can have a motion on those?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the geotech testing contracts on the project, various projects as presented by our city engineer, any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. We have an engineering proposal for our little mishap, unfortunate, uh, forced main, water main breakdown, that we need repairs on Aspen Boulevard from the golf course area, and Tammy has presented a proposal from DGR, the amount of approximately thirty-five thousand dollars to, uh, review and, uh, propose a fix for that.
Right, to put plans together, to bid them out, and to do the construction admin.
Unfortunately, not an easy fix.
No.
Yuck. All we needed. If I can have a motion to approve DGR, amount of thirty-five thousand three hundred?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the, uh, engineering proposal for forced main and water main repairs on Aspen Boulevard with DGR, the amount of thirty-five thousand three hundred, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Tammy, you're gonna update us on the Holly main project schedule?
Um, actually Mitch Mergans here from Stockwell to give you an update on that.
Mitch? You're gonna update us on the Holly?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, yeah, Tammy just asked me to come tonight just to give a quick update on project schedule. Uh, the, we have, there is the current schedule that was laid out in the plans, and you can see phase one being towards the north, and contractor working their way to the south along Dogwood and Main Street in those phases. Um, because of the, the rain and the wet weather that we've experienced this year, that's delayed the contractor getting started out there, and so they've come to us and we've had a couple meetings with them just on different ways maybe to still try to get this work done this year, and get them back on a schedule that they can accomplish all the work. Um, so they've proposed starting more towards the Dogwood area, which would be that green area on the map, label that as phase three, I believe. Um, they would like to, they're proposing to start there in the next couple weeks, and, which is, is a good thought, 'cause it gets them working in that area right away during the heat of the year, and, you know, when we're hopefully past the rain seasons now, uh, so we like that part of it, the, the, the thing that we're discussing with them is to do that, they had to, you know, this is a sanitary sewer project, so we have a gravity sewer that's being started at the lift station, and being constructed all the way through, it's very flat, there's some potential risks to the contractor for them to change that sequencing like that, um, so we're discussing that with those, we're making sure that they understand those risks. There's no additional cost with what they're proposing, um, there's no additional extension or anything of that sort, uh, but again, there is a risk to them, and we wanna make sure they realize that those risks are their risks, and so we're working on getting some correspondence from them, so they, so we have that understanding. Um, but if this goes forward, if, if we get that correspondence, we're gonna, we would recommend and allow them to, to move forward in that direction, we'd start notifying the property owners around there so that they know that that is gonna get started here soon. Again, they're thinking in the next two weeks, they'd probably like to start on that schedule, so, we just wanted to give you an update and let you know where we're at with that.
Very good. We talked about this at briefing and the risks involved, you need to be very clear and alleviate those risks to the contractors, but the other thing that I need out of you guys at Stockwell engineers, pardon the pun, but you guys get on Dogwood and you hound them like a dog.
Yeah, sure, yep.
I mean, this, we cannot fail on this project, Mitch.
Yep.
We gotta get it done.
And we wanna make sure everybody understands there's a condition in those, we did write a condition into the plans for Dogwood and Main Street, they have to have Dogwood completely built before they can go into the Main Street portion, okay, because all the lumberyard does all their business there. So yes, we, we understand that, we will be on them.
Get your meeting set up as quickly as possible, and, uh, uh, roll and, and...
Yep.
Just explain that failure is not an option on this baby.
Yep, understood.
So what additional risk is there?
Well, when, when you lay a gravity sewer, they're gonna go upstream from the, the, from the start of the project, you know, if there was, um, we don't know where every buried line is, or every potential conflict that could exist, so we always have, we always set up our drawings so that they start from the low bottom and work their way up, so if we run into a conflict, they can make adjustments. When you start in the middle of the project, you're kinda committing yourself to some elevations there, so if there is a conflict downstream, and we have to adjust that upstream portion, there is a chance that a potential, they'd have to relay some, some stuff in there. This project, most of the sewers roughly twenty feet deep, so the chances of there being something that deep that we'd find a conflict are probably, probably pretty small. Um, so we feel that the risk is somewhat small, but it's still, it's still a risk out there, and, and...
Barb, at the council briefing meeting, somebody explained it to me, 'cause I had the same question, and stupidly, I'm not an engineer, no certifications, nothing, but they explained it to me, if the, you're coming from this angle, and you, you started up here and it's here, and you meet in the middle, and all of a sudden they're like this, now what? Because, you know?
Right.
It runs downhill, and going uphill is not a...
And, and we're gonna take some precautions just to help, too, by making some upstream adjustments where we can, just to help that situation, so we hopefully alleviate that risk even more, um, but that's essentially just as he's describing, the, the major risk.
So if you, excuse me, so if you start at Dogwood, then are you going up or down next?
Uh, so it'd be going down through the blue portion would be the next phase.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that'd be Main Street. And again, they have to have that area in green completely built before they can move into that, area in blue.
Great, thanks for the update, Mitch, and as I said, uh, from our standpoint, just get on it and, uh, get on it hard.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Tammy, you have a grease trap update report?
Yep, city staff is still working with, uh, the six restaurants in town, there's two large contributors, two medium contributors, and then two small contributors, and we're just working through kind of their maintenance schedule, and making sure that our ordinance is fair, and something that we're able to implement right away, so. We plan to be working with them for probably another month or so, and then we'll bring the, the ordinance to council.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, we need a motion to approve Redwood Storm Sewer Project Pay Application Number Two in the amount of forty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Second.
Motion is second to approve pay up number two for the Storm Sewer Project on Redwood Boulevard, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
How's that going, Tammy?
Hopefully it's open here in the next couple days, they had it all paved over the weekend, so, just a little bit of cleanup work left to do. The, the detour signs out there on Split Rock are a little bit confusing yet, since we have two separate contractors, and the state's actually detouring their vehicles around on Holly also, so we actually have three sign contractors out there, so we're working on trying to make that a little bit easier.
Very good, thank you. Uh, well, number nine, we have change orders number one and two, change order number one was just a time change order, number two was for, uh, increased screening from down to twenty-three feet rather than twelve feet for eighty-six hundred dollars, eighty-eight hundred dollars, I should say. Uh, can I have a motion to approve those two change orders on well, well, number nine project?
So moved.
Motion is second to approve change orders number one and two on well, number nine project, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Any new business, Brian, counsel?
No.
Counsel? I would entertain a motion to adjourn at seven oh nine.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn at seven oh nine, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thanks.